Immediately afterwards, let's pray. Dear heavenly father, thank you for the many blessings you bestowed upon each and every one of us. Thank you for this great, uh, this great county in which we live. Thank you for this great state. Thank you for this great country. Thank you, dear lord, for the freedoms that we enjoy by being Americans. Thank you to all of those that have served in the military to secure and to protect our freedoms. Now guide and direct us, help us to make decisions that are beneficial to those that we serve. We pray these things, dear lord, in your name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, without any doubt.
Like to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. We've got a fairly lengthy agenda, so I'll ask everyone, remind everyone to, uh, there's anything on the agenda that you need to speak to or anything on the, that's not on the agenda that you need to speak to. We'll try to, we'll ask you to keep your minute, your comments to three minutes or less. With that being said, we've got an agenda in front of us, but we've got an addition to it, Ms. Daniels.
Yes, we have one addition, uh, section four, number twenty-six, update from A R P C budget changes, Chris Reece How. And but I would ask that you would move that behind number four.
Behind number four, under reports and requests. Can you help me remember that?
Mr. Chairman, my promotion, we approve the agenda presented with the change.
Got a motion to come from Mr. Peacock, second from Mr. Branch. Any questions, comments, hearing now, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously. Under section one, recognitions, resolutions and presentations, we have none, so that will move us down to section two, which is public hearing. Out of number one, under the public hearing is, uh, board review and approval of East Gate Park expansion, Ms. Daniels.
This is a request for a mobile home park development order for an eighty-three unit expansion to an existing forty-three unit mobile home park on twenty-four point twenty-one acres known as East Gate Park. Expansion will include new vehicular use areas, improvements to the existing stormwater facility, and new connections to the Jackson County water and sewer. The project is located at fifty-one ninety-four highway ninety, approximately three thousand feet east of the intersection of highways ninety and seventy-one south and unincorporated Jackson County. And on August nineteenth, the planning commission recommended denial of East Gate Mobile Home Park, uh, to the Board of County Commissioners based on two potential safety concerns. Both concerns have since been resolved. I mean, I do believe there might be some people maybe present and online to speak.
Okay, well, we're going to go into a public hearing.
I was just gonna ask, what were the concerns?
One of them had to do with space, the other had to do with the school board being able to use interior roads to drop students off off the bus.
Alright, that's, that's the two I remembered, I just wanted to make sure.
With that being said, we'll close out our regular session, open up a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak either for or against the issuance of the development order for the East Gate Park expansion? Seeing no hands in the audience, Fred, is there any, anyone online wishing to speak either for or against the issuance of the development order?
If anyone online would like to speak for or against this item, they may use the raise hand feature on Zoom or star nine via telephone. I see no hands.
Okay, thank you, Fred. With that.
There is also something laying at your table that came in today. It was just a comment we received via email. Wanted to just make sure y'all saw that.
Do you want to give us kind of a, maybe a summarization of it?
Well, it's, it's a brief comment, it just says, um, it, it had, it was in reference to the map not being, or the, I think it was a misunderstanding of what the map shows, correct, Kim?
If you don't mind. Ms. Swayze?
So, um, I can't remember the, the lady's name, but she, um, submitted a comment to our info email, saying that it appeared, based on what she was looking at, that the number of units that they were requesting was not in compliance with our comprehensive plan because the, um, property in question was classified as, um, residential future land use. And she wasn't aware of the, the land use change that was granted back in July.
And this is Ms. Forster?
Yes.
Rhonda Forster?
Yeah.
So now she understands that the land use change has been, the land use has changed, and it does allow this development.
I did respond to her and submitted the, um, documentation to her, yes.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that being said, we close out the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the, or deny the, uh, the development of.
So move.
Motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner McKinney. Any other questions, comments, hearing now, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you, moving down to item number two under the public hearing, this is board review and approval of the Bethlehem Ridge Minor Subdivision. Ms. Daniels.
A request for final plat and development agreement approval for a ten lot minor subdivision to be known as Bethlehem Ridge subdivision. Subdivision is located south of Coley Road, east of Mutual Road, and west of Bethlehem Road in unincorporated Jackson County. At their regularly scheduled meeting on September third, the planning commission recommended approval of the final plat.
Okay, you've heard the explanation, chair will entertain a motion. If there's any questions. We'll close out this, uh, regular meeting, go into a public hearing. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak either for or against the issuance of this, uh, the approval of the final plat? You don't mind, come to the podium, sir?
My name is Brad, Ken, I spoke to you on July the, the ninth, I believe, was the meeting about the, this particular property, and about the sinkhole and the runoff that's in that, in the corner of that property. I have, uh, with me.
Yeah.
The first page there is the overall LiDAR that was taken after Hurricane Michael, showing the elevations of the property, uh, surrounding it. The red square is the property in question, the blue dotted line around that is the, uh, is the approximate watershed. There's three hundred acres that drain into this, uh, bottom side of this property. There is one way of this water to get out of the property, and on a typical one-inch rainfall, that's about ten million gallons of water. The second page there that shows the, uh, the LiDAR scan also, it shows the arrow in the corner is where the sinkhole was at. This is a Google Earth map, same spot, same sinkhole. This is a blow up of the LiDAR map showing the sinkhole. And then you have a couple of pictures there with you that also is, as of June, uh, August the thirty-first, those pictures were taken on the property. And the hole is approximately ten foot across, six feet deep. There is no drainage of that hole other than across this property. This is the GPS coordinates if anybody wants to participate in it. Going through the, uh, the packet, and I saw nothing where we addressed the sinkhole to the, uh, wildlife or, or anyone, the sinkhole was not addressed at all in any of the documents that was revised. There hasn't been a lot of revisions made to the document since the July ninth meeting, and a lot of things were addressed, but, uh, this was not addressed. The other thing that was not addressed is, uh, Mr. Crutchfield, I, I hate that he's not here tonight, but, uh, he had stated that Coley Road was a well-maintained county road, and it had power lines going down. It, it does not, there is only power on one side of this property, on mutual roadside. The other three roads do not have power lines at all. There is no power to this property, other than the mutual roadside.
And, and your concern, as I recall, um, Mr. Kent was basically with the.
With the drainage.
Drainage to the, to the sinkhole.
Yes, and it, and the bigger LiDAR map. Shows this watershed, again, it's, it's about three hundred acres that drain into this pond, it's on the corner of this property. This thing, it stays flooded. This was right after Hurricane Michael, and you can see the volume of water in it, because LiDAR can't see through the water. So you're looking at where the water, uh, is and can drain back up here to the north. It comes out, goes around, and ends up down in Dry Creek, out this way. Other than that, it goes straight in the ground. This is a sinkhole, slow sinkhole that fills our aqua.
And, and you're, you're concerned that the additional development that will occur as a result of this will have a negative impact?
A lot of, you know, a lot of, just a lot of different garbage. Uh, further down the road going north, you got trailer after trailer after trailer, the trailers, they move in there, everybody's going good, it gets abandoned. On the north end of this road, there's, there's place after place, it's just abandoned. And I just, personally, I don't think we need any more subdivisions out in the country, you know, you know. Why can't we redevelop the subdivisions we already have into the, in the city or where people want to live right up amongst each other? We live in the country for a reason, we've just built a lot, a whole lot of neighbors and a lot of people gathered around us. And more and more of the farmlands are being taken up, we, and, and we see, you know, subdivision after subdivision coming into our county. And for what? I, I, I understand, Mr. Peacock's, it, he made a statement last meeting that it helps to raise adware taxes. I think we should try to lower adware taxes, lower our budget, try to get back inside of our means instead of continue on this, continue to spend up, continue to spend up, and encourage more and more people to come in and, and ruin the Jackson County that we have. Now, that's a, that's my opinion of ruining, and I understand that the community development order is a vibrant, growing economy. But look inside of Marianna, look inside of Alford, there's nothing vibrant and growing about that. Well, all I want to do is just push people out where they're, where they can develop other people's land, take the farmland, and we continue to just, you know, we got a family dollar there in Alford, abandoned, you know? What will ever come in there? Probably nothing. You look at the, uh, Daphen Merkington, what's coming in there? Nothing, you know, we've got so many abandoned buildings down here by McCoys. The old building that's, the roof is torn off of, you know, it's been sitting there since Hurricane Michael, abandoned, you know? Perhaps we need to encourage more development there rather than out in the country, especially when you've got places where this is a major water thing. We've got water shortages anyway all over the country. Why do we continue?
Did you, did you, did you present your concerns to the planning and zoning board? Were you present there?
I've only consented, presented here, that's the only time I knew that to present.
Didn't know if you had an opportunity to, to present your concerns to the planning and zoning board when they made the, uh, recommendation to approve this. I just wasn't sure if you were there or not.
No, I was not aware of that, I was just understood that public hearing was when we could speak.
Mr. Chairman, I thought. I know we had some questions about this when this came up, like you said.
It was in July.
Has water management looked at this?
Yes.
They have looked at it?
Because it's in a protected wetland area, Jackson County has a fifty-foot setback to that wetland area, it's already protected.
So in other words, where the sinkhole is located and where the development is going to occur, it's far enough, it's far enough away that it's deemed protected.
Where, where the sinkhole is at is not in that wetland, it is not in that zone A. That is in zone X, and it's across the road from that wetland, the sinkhole that I just showed you a picture of. Also, on July the ninth, we were told that in the file, there was a document from, uh, water management. It had been submitted, and it was already in the file. In our paperwork today, we found out that it's August the twelfth, is when that paperwork was, was finally submitted.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak either for or against the, uh, the approval of the final plat? Seeing no hands, Fred, anyone online wishing to speak either for or against the issuance of the, uh, final plat for the Bethlehem subdivision?
Just as a reminder, anybody wishing to speak for or against this item may use the raise hand feature on Zoom or star nine via telephone. I do have one hand already up.
Okay. Can you hear us?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead, is that your name, please, sir?
Yes, sir, it's Matthew Bosick, I am the owner of the property.
Okay.
And I wanted to talk through the concerns of, uh, the neighbor that just spoke, uh, first and foremost, that sinkhole. Going through that comment, and, um, previously it was, it was discussed with me that that was on lot ten, which is on the east side of Bethlehem, uh, road. With that, the investigation I did myself and also with Jeffrey from Drainage and Transportation, when he had gone out there, um, to investigate not only the drainage concern that was brought up at the last B O C C, but as well as looking at the potential sinkhole issue. It was determined that that sinkhole is in the middle of the wetland, and that's what we added to this, uh, minor plat survey, where that sinkhole is converted into a wetland, it's shown on the Jackson County Registry as a wetland, and there's a fifty-foot setback to ensure that nothing can encroach on that wetland or any of the, the drainage that occurs naturally to that wetland. Um, it's a duck pond now, and it does carry all that volume, volume of rainfall and everything that, that he mentioned. There is no way to impede on that, since it is a protected wetland. Um, and it, you know, you have a hundred foot plus worth of clearance along the drainage way, and then fifty foot off of the entire pond itself. So it is protected, there is no way to do anything to, uh, encroach on that. Um, outside of that, the drainage concern, uh, on the, the roadway on Coley and Bethlehem, Jeffrey, uh, in Rhodes and, Bridge Department, if I'm not mistaken, uh, that's the name of the department. He had gone out there and he had emphasized that he doesn't see an issue and that there, uh, there isn't necessarily anything that needs to happen at this time for any kind of maintenance or repair of that roadway. Um, and then the third concern I heard was mentioned about power. So there is nothing in the code that requires power be, be brought to those lots. However, I had done research on my end and spoken to the co-op, and the co-op, um, had confirmed that once someone buys that, uh, let's say it's any one of those lots. Um, more or less, it's the fee to bring the pole and the wire and the transformer to their lot corner. Each one of those poles and transformers would serve two lots, since it would be placed on a lot corner, and it gets charged at roughly four dollars a linear foot. It's a very nominal fee of, call it a hundred feet, you're talking about serving power, um, once a building permit gets pulled for under five hundred dollars to two lots at that point. Um, that's all typically taken into account during the building process under the building permit. If it's something that I do have to do and I'm mistaken, I'll, I'll gladly do that, that's not necessarily an issue. Um, I just wanted to address that comment. And then lastly, the concern around, uh, development in the area. That, this was very specifically made as a minor subdivision, uh, meeting all code requirements, and purposely not doing any kind of major subdivision in the area, since the, the land development code allows for one dwelling per acre. However, what you'll notice when you look at the minor plat is that the smallest that I went was five acres, to the largest at sixteen and a half acres for that lot ten where the wetland is located, specifically to allow people to still have that large field, that large, um, rural land that they, they desire and that they want, and I'm very attuned to that, and I wanted to make sure that that was maintained. And so, I, I want to make sure that it's understood that I was trying my best to keep this as a minor subdivision and to, uh, not impede on any neighbors or, you know, more or less maintain the, the same way of life that everybody is after.
Okay, thank you, is there anything else?
That is it, thank you.
Okay, very good, uh, thank you. Uh, with that being said, anyone else, Fred, online wishing to speak either for or against the, uh, issuance, the approval of this final plat?
I see no more hands up.
Thanks, Fred. With that being said, we'll close out the public hearing, go back into our regular session. Uh, Kim, uh, I don't know if it's Kim or Amber, I need to ask, but did, did, was it Matthew that was online? Did he say that each one of these lots as platted would be five acres?
Well, they range from a little over five acres to sixteen acres.
From five to sixteen?
Yes.
Okay. The, uh, the request, uh, and the recommendation from the planning and zoning board was to approve the final plat.
I have a question for Mr. Kent.
Mr. Kent?
How close do you live to this property?
Our family property is forty over.
They're sporting between you and this property?
Along the, uh, Omega Trail. Along the Omega Trail, they're forty over.
How deep is that sinkhole?
About six foot deep. It is on the other side of Bethlehem Road, it's right where a driveway would be on lot one. It's a lot further than one hundred foot from any power line to any corner, except on the east or other side.
So the water collects in that bottom and drains out through here, is that what you're saying?
Water collects mostly on the east side, on lot ten, but the, the hole has occurred, uh, somewhere since, that the report said that in two thousand and ten, the timber was cleared on the east side, and somewhere since then, that hole has been.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Chair will entertain a motion, one way or the other.
Ms. Amber, I have a question for you about the sinkhole for us, uh, legal documentation. Do we have any legal documentation pertaining to the sinkhole? Management, nothing?
Oh, management.
From water, water management.
Um, we have something from, um, Florida Wildlife Conservation, they addressed the sinkhole.
And they stated. Nothing they can do?
Well, I mean, because it's protected, there's nothing more that they can do.
Okay.
So when it comes to Florida in general, just about every, nearly almost all these wetlands that are, are showing up as ponds in the area, they all started out as, as sinkholes. If you go back decades, looking at the registry map, it hasn't changed. So this isn't necessarily any kind of inherent risk, or it's expanding or anything like that. It's just a matter of, that's, that's part of the reason why I purposely made that lot sixteen and a half acres, was to allow someone to build a home on the northwest corner if they wanted to, which is as far away from that as you can possibly get, since right now it's sitting there as, as a duck pond. Um, and again, with it being protected and it being classified as a protected area with that setback, there is nothing you can do within that area without incurring incredibly heavy fines, as wetlands are, are no, no joke in Florida. Um, as we all know, we can't build anywhere near that, and there's appropriate setbacks set in place for that reason. Um, but yeah, there's, if there's any other concerns on that, please, uh, I can address any questions.
Thank you.
That is on lot one, not sixteen, the river sinkhole is that. Sinkhole is in the bottom, that is, would be a rival.
I apologize, I can't hear anything he's saying.
Yeah, what, what Mr. Kent is saying is that the sinkhole is in lot one.
Lot one.
Not lot, not the sixteen acre lot.
The sinkhole is in lot one, it's across the street from, from the sixteen acre lot. There's no criteria and no wetland setback or anything on that for this particular sinkhole.
So is this sinkhole part of that pond?
No.
That's bottom?
No.
It's on the upland?
It's across the road from that pond. It's in lot one.
What is water management, look at the right sinkhole?
So it's the lot that's on the corner of Coley and Mutual?
No, it's the, it's the.
Yeah, it's Cole, 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 Coley and Mutual.
It's in, it's in this lot, it's like, what lot is that? Nine, it's in lot nine.
Oh, lot nine.
Mr. Chairman.
Hard to read the.
It's hard to read it, I was thinking.
I can't read this map.
Seven, eight, now, okay, so it's down at the corner of.
This is lot nine, the hole is here.
Yeah, okay.
Oh. So it's running. Well, where's the sixteen acre track?
It's the one over here.
Oh.
Yeah, that's right.
It's over. Okay, okay. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I make a motion, we table this, that we figure out where the sinkhole is at, and what's going on.
Well, it sounds to me like it's, it's in lot nine, and I think that's pretty much confirmed.
It's on upland, and she's saying water management, I, I'm concerned that we're dumping.
Right.
We're dumping water directly into the cars.
So it's basically right, right here, right in the, uh, what I'm gonna say, the northeast corner of lot nine. Or pretty close to it.
This is a drainage ditch here, and then you've got the sinkhole here, boundary line is somewhere along here.
Okay.
And so you're really restricted on that lot.
Is that a form of a motion?
That is a motion.
And your motion was to table this until we get additional information, maybe have, where that.
Somebody identify and give us a good reading of what's going on, because I don't know that water management is talking about the same sinkhole he's talking about.
Okay.
What I can do is I, I can send the surveyor out there to confirm any kind of, um, issue. If it's, I don't know if it's possible, but if I can get the exhibits that you guys are looking at, because I didn't see that in my understanding from the last B O C C, was that it was in lot ten, so I apologize if I misunderstood that. Um, any kind of investigation that's needed, I, I'm fully in support and can do anything, I want to make sure that this is done correctly and the right way, and I don't, I don't necessarily.
So, are we still in a public hearing? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so we're still in a public hearing, so we can't take.
I'm sorry, I thought we got out of here.
So a- anything else? It's, it appears to me that there seems to be a consensus that from the board that we need to get a little bit more information before we move forward. Uh, getting, and I think I heard what you say, said, uh, Matthew, is that you could have a surveyor go out there and locate that, uh, that sinkhole that we're talking about?
Yeah, absolutely, and if there's a, a setback that you guys would like to impose on that, if you don't mind letting me know what that would be, so that way I can make sure that gets shown.
Coordinate with Mr. Kent, so make sure we're all talking about the same sinkhole.
And then I, I guess that my other question would be is, is could this be, well, I won't go there, yeah, let's, let's do that. Okay, so anything else from the public? With that being said, we'll close out the public hearing, go back into our regular session, chair will entertain a motion to.
Let's table it, then we can gather more information.
We've got a motion from Commissioner Peacock to table this issue until additional information can be gathered about the exact location of the sinkhole, the exact size, and then the limits of the, uh, protected area around it.
Correct.
Okay, got a second from Commissioner McKinney? Any other questions, comments, hearing now, all those in favor of the motion stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Kent, thank you. Go, we'll move out of the public hearing then, section of our agenda, go into community development, which there are no items. Yes, sir.
Amber, would you make sure you got the contact information for Mr. Kent? Thank you.
There are no items under the community development, so it'll take us to reports and requests. Item number one under the report and request is consent agenda, I trust everyone's had a chance to look at the consent agenda items. Chair will entertain a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch to approve the consent agenda items. Any questions? Hearing now, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously, item number two, moving down the agenda, is board approval to surplus ten vehicles and sell at auction. This is from, uh, the pleasure of the sheriff, Ms. Daniels.
This is a request to, uh, surplus a list of vehicles that are attached, um, to be surplus and sold at auction.
And these are all, from what I, I think I saw, that these are all non-operable, uh, currently inoperable vehicles?
Correct.
Yeah. Got a motion from Christopher Branch.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Peacock, any questions? Hearing now, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously. Item number three is board approval of the core contract and the fee schedule, Ms. Lane? Good evening.
I'm here to present, it's the same standard core contract between Department of Health and the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners, Commission. It states our annual, um, contribution of the one hundred forty-six thousand. The, um, document change is about the vehicles where we're responsible is in the contract.
Okay.
Um, and so it's for your approval.
This is the second of the three one-year extensions?
That's, that's the next one, is the renewal for the, um, for the community development part. This is just the standard core contract between the Health Department and the.
Got a motion from Commissioner Kenny, a second from Commissioner Peacock. Fee schedule as well. Motion from Commissioner, uh, McKinney, a second from Commissioner Peacock, any questions? Ms. Lane, while she's here, hearing now, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign. Next item is yours in twelve.
Yes, that is, um, the second renewal for the, um.
Office space on Green Street.
Yes. Yes, for the community development there at the Health Department.
And we can do this one more time after that, so this is the second, three, one year extensions.
You gave us a discount, right?
It's, it's the same, you just.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner McKinney, any questions? Comments hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item number, we'll call it number five, but it's actually item twenty-six if we move, which is, um, A R P C budget changes, Chris? Good evening.
Peter Fisher.
Yes, sir.
I'm Chris Retal, I'm the executive director for the Appalachian Regional Plan Council and I'm here to address the commission on the action of our council meeting that happened on August twenty-nine. Uh, for a little background, the, the Appalachian Regional Plan Council was formed, uh, almost forty-seven years ago, uh, last couple of weeks ago. Uh, we were through interlocal agreement between the nine counties in the region, Jackson, Calhoun and Gulf on the west, all the way to Jefferson on the east. We're formed for the sole purpose of providing technical assistance to our member local governments. We serve as extra capacity for our staff, is essentially what we do. Um, I'm here because we hired a, uh, a consultant with the approval of our executive committee a couple of months ago to kind of look at the A R P C's finances. Little background, when we were formed back in nineteen seventy-seven, each county paid five thousand dollars in dues. We did not put an inflation index on those dues. When I started with the council twenty-five years ago, I've been director for eleven years, we started with, when I became director, we had six people. Two were full-time, the rest were part-time, we were struggling financially. We've grown the council to twenty-two full-time employees, we're providing a lot of services to our local governments, especially in our region, which truly need it as the majority of our region is rural. Um, you have in front of you a list of contracts and projects that the A R P C has done for you all for the past four years. What we have calculated on our website, we have an economic impact dashboard on our website. On average, for Jackson County, the return on investment has been, uh, for every dollars, every dollar dues you pay, you get thirty-six dollars in return. So there is a significant return investment. Back to the consultant, the issue that I had been struggling with is trying to cover our overhead costs. As you can imagine, five thousand dollars back in nineteen seventy-seven, a lot more spending power than it does today. That five thousand dollars today would be almost twenty-six thousand dollars. The consultant looked at how we were structured, compared us to the other regional plan councils in the state, especially the two that were most similar to ours, the North Central Florida Regional Plan Council in Gainesville and the Central Florida Regional Plan Council in, um, Pope County. They're both have very similar populations, very similar, uh, per capita income, and they looked at their due structure. What, what he recommended and this, and our board approved was a due structure that kind of put us in that sweet spot in between. We still, with the approved dues increase, they, we're still not where we would be if we were at twenty-six or five thousand dollars with an inflation index. We're well below that, but that does result in an increase for Jackson County this year of twelve thousand dollars. When we started this process, I had the sole intent of waiting until the next fiscal year, because I know you all and every other county is almost final, you know, finalizing their budget. However, uh, the consultant said for each year that you put this off, the council's gonna be further in the hole, we're kicking the can down the road if we don't act. So the council, which is, the council is actually the board, our governing board, I'm just staff, you know, my employees are just staff. The council decided it was worth the effort to come and try to get this in at each county's budget. In fact, two of our counties, Franklin and Gulf, said, you know what, we'll pay an extra five thousand because we value the services of the council. We know that maybe some counties that, that can't take this on this, at this point in the game. So I've been to Franklin, they've approved it, Gulf has approved it, uh, Leon County, um, is being hit with a forty-eight thousand dollar increase. Um, and that one might be, might be a heavy lift, um. I don't have an answer from them yet, but I'm here to answer any questions you may have, um, and I humbly ask for some more.
So Gulf County and Franklin County both approved a five thousand dollar per year increase.
They approved their increase plus five thousand.
Oh.
So they put in fifteen, right?
Yes, yeah.
So each county's increase is based on.
It's population.
Population, correct.
Well, our total increase is.
Twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand.
Yeah, and I know that, uh, as you stated, that, uh, A R P C does, provides a lot of technical assistance to, uh, all of those counties. And I know that we've been, uh, a beneficiary of, of those services on a number of different occasions. Uh, I guess my question would be, so it's a twelve thousand dollar increase from what, what is, what are we paying currently?
Currently, it would be nine thousand this year, uh, yeah.
So nine thousand eighteen dollars is what we're paying currently.
That's what, that's what was in the budget for this coming fiscal year before this consultant convinced the board to go ahead and try to make the increase, um, right, you know, earlier than I anticipated.
Increases a twelve thousand even or?
It is, the increase from last year would be twelve thousand one hundred seven dollars and forty-eight cents.
Where, uh, Sarah, where would this, in the budget, where would these dollars come from if we were to agree? Contingency, yeah. And what, what do we have that budgeted for right now to? Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's a good, it's a good deal.
I serve on that board, they do a lot of good things, so I make a motion to approve it.
Okay, got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner McKinney.
Yes.
Any other questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Chris, thank you for the summary and explanation and, uh, appreciate the work that the A R P C does for us and, uh, hopefully we can, you know, hopefully keep these rates in, in place for a while now.
Thank you so very much, and I will say that, I should add that the board approved with this dues increase structure that, that there's a six thousand dollar base and a thirty-five cent per capita. We went ahead and the board approved a, that six thousand dollar base moving forward will be indexed to inflation to help offset future asks, so we're hoping this will set us straight and we'll afford it, we'll be done.
Let Leon County know that the four rural counties did their part and they need to step up to the plate.
I plan on doing that, sir. Thank you very much.
Well, they, what we're trying to do is get Tallahassee.
Yes.
To pay also.
That, that came up in the conversation today is why the city of Tallahassee paying, they receive a lot of these benefits. So that, I think that's, the ask will be made.
Thank you.
Thank you.
None of our towns pay, it's just the county that's paying.
Okay, moving down the agenda to original item number five, which is board approval to appoint Garrett Haudele. Is that correct, Kelsey? Um, to the T D C board.
Yes, the T D C voted to approve this appointment during its August meeting.
Okay.
Salute.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch, any questions? Comments hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously. Also note that, uh, Kenny Hamilton came on as the city's informant to replace Travis Seaford who's coming off. That's, um, so item number six is board approval to initiate the request or proposal for museum planning services, Ms. Daniels.
Yes, this is a request to allow staff to initiate the R F P process for museum planning services for the Jackson County Endeavor Museum. This process would include organizational structure, funding sources and exhibit planning, and would help guide the engineering and architectural design of the interior of the spaces.
Salute, second.
A motion from Commissioner Peacock and a second from Commissioner McKinney to approve the, uh, request to, uh, uh, initiate the R F P for museum planning services, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously, moving down the agenda to item number seven, board acceptance of a FEMA assistance to fire grant, firefighters grant, Ms. Daniels.
Yeah, if y'all will allow me, I'm gonna, but she threw her up to present this item just because he did all the work. I think he should get to present it.
Mr. Brunner, Chief Brunner.
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening, David.
Uh, so a couple of items we have, uh, the first one is uh, board approval to accept the FEMA assistance firefighters grant. Uh, this is a grant in the amount of, total amount would be four hundred eighty-five thousand dollars with the county only owing four, forty-four thousand ninety dollars and ninety-one cent for a two thousand gallon, uh, fire truck tanker truck. Um, so we got a, uh, we're asking the board to accept that to replace our current tanker.
And this, of these dollars, the match won't have to come out of this year's budget, more than likely it'd be next year's budget.
Twenty-five, twenty-six. Twenty-five, twenty-six.
Twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
So it'll be budgeted, correct?
It'll be a budgeted item.
It will take about eighteen to twenty months to build. Once we, we're finalizing the specs now, we'll send them to FEMA for approval and then we'll bring it to the board for approval to purchase.
This is a replacement, to replace an existing tanker that's held?
We purchased it the year that Florida State won the national championship. In twenty thirteen, twenty thirteen, it wasn't this year. But, uh, we actually went to, uh, it's funny because we went to Coleman, Alabama and bought it, but we bought it used for ninety thousand dollars, the board did. And, uh, the chassis was used as an old Penske moving truck and, uh, had about three hundred thousand miles on it when we got it, so.
Not service purpose.
Yeah, the tank's got some rust issues, it is actually, uh, a steel tank that's been welded several times by the shop, so it's not a poly drop-in tank and, uh, it's, it's rusted through several times that we've been.
That's true.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion, we approve this request.
Got a motion to approve the request, second from Commissioner.
I second.
Yes.
Commissioner McKinney. Uh, any other questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously, good work on that, it's not often that you get a piece of equipment like that for forty-four thousand dollars.
I told Ms. Daniels, this is the third year in a row that we've been successful in getting a truck. Uh, so we've got one point five million dollars in trucks for only a hundred fifty thousand dollars, so our batting average has been pretty good on that, it's great.
Okay, the, uh, next item is yours as well, Chief.
Yes, this is the board acceptance of the EMS matching grant and ratification of the signed agreement. In February, we applied for a matching grant for our blood program. The state has changed their process through the Department of Health Bureau of EMS where they sent out the docu-sign to the chairman and, uh, Mr. Chairman, you and I worked on that process. Um, we just wanted to bring it for the board, have it on record and ratify that agreement and that required match is thirty-two hundred dollars. Um, for a total budget of, um, thirty-two thousand dollars that would go towards our blood program.
Is that thirty-two hundred dollars in this year's budget then?
We have a grant match, yes, we have a budget.
Oh, it's a grant match.
Yes, we have a grant match line item that we budget.
So move.
And this is just to ratify that?
Yes, sir, and accept the, uh, the grant formally on the record.
Motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner McKinney. Any other questions, comments, hearing none, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously. Item number nine is yours as well, this is, uh, EMS County Awards Grant Agreement.
Yes, sir, this is the board ratification of the EMS County Awards Grant, so this is the grant that we applied for back in around November, December and that the board has to adopt the resolution each year. So going forward, again, the Department of Health changed the process and when, when the county signed the docu-sign that you and I worked through, so going forward, we won't have to fill out the application each year, they're just gonna automatically return funds to the Board of County Commissioners. And that was in the amount of six thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars, eighty-four percent, with no local match, it was a hundred percent.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock. Second from Commissioner Branch, any questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please symbolize by raising the right hand, all opposed. That motion carries unanimously and item number ten is yours as well, Chief.
So this is a board approval to reallocate high-performance CPR grant funds for our blood administration program. So this was kind of a, a long convoluted process, so in a nutshell, we, uh, applied, we were part of a, um, federal grant, state EMS was working on for high-performance CPR, heads-up CPR. And part of that grant process, project was the state EMS office identified a vendor and put together a package based on, on the amount of equipment that we would need and they were working with a sole source. Uh, we, we attended to training, uh, that was required by the scope of work. Uh, so we, we sent, uh, six of our employees to the training to become trained trainers. It was no cost to the county, it was locally in the Panhandle and Destin. And October twenty-three, they attended that training, that was a one-day course. Um, we were allocated fifty-four thousand six hundred dollars with no local match required. Um, and through that process, the, the vendor got hit with inflation. So when they get hit with inflation, the project stalled. So when the vendor came through of inflation, they realized that the other partners in the package couldn't provide the products that they originally promised to each of the counties. So they weren't going to be able to deliver the heads-up devices and all of the ancillary consumable device medical equipment for the grant package. And so we emailed the state and said, hey, we reached out to get updated quote and they cannot fill it through email and they can't promise, well, they can't deliver on the promise, so what do we do now? State emailed us back and said that Jackson County has fulfilled their obligations for the grant and that that money can be used, the Board of County Commissioners already has the money and they can, uh, allocate that fund towards EMS to use on one other project that, um, the board and the EMS agency feels like they could use it on, so we're asking it to move it towards our blood program.
Fifty-four thousand dollars can be used wherever we need to?
Yes, sir, as a, as a project.
So, I mean, do you have any ideas on stuff?
Looks like you want to move it to.
We wanted to move it to our blood program because we originally budgeted our, in our matching grant, a much higher amount uh, for our blood program and the state reduced it to give more, fund more projects across the state for the matching grant. And so they reduced our project to start a small blood program and hope to build from there. Um, geographically, we have a thousand square mile county, so, or close to it, so it, logistically, we needed more money for more blood. Um, and so we think that the fifty-four thousand six hundred would be best fit for this project and this will get the project off the ground. I would, it's our idea to, to put it in all of the ambulances across the county rather than just one because it's such a far stretch to run across the county when ultimately that patient could be a definitive care before you could get blood to that patient, so.
So you're gonna put plasma on the ambulance?
We will carry packed red cells and plasma on each ambulance is, is our plan.
So move, Chief, second.
Yes, sir.
Got a motion from Commissioner McKinney, a second from Commissioner Peacock.
And that's on every ambulance.
This will be, yes, sir.
Very good.
That's a great job.
Any other questions, comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please symbolize by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously, Chief Brunner, appreciate it.
Yes, sir, I got two more.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, the next item is board approval to renew public consulting group contract for the public emergency medical transportation program. Um, we, you all previously, uh, utilized the Palm Beach County, Florida B O C C contract. This is renewing it, um, Palm Beach County awarded their contract to P C G Public Consulting Group, there was no change in percentage. Um, so the contract language just, uh, remained the same and we need board approval to renew that.
It's percentage of the Medicaid and Medicare?
Correct, they take six percent of, and that is the, uh, state industry standard, so there was no increase on that percentage.
Worked out well.
Are they getting us more money?
That will be the next item you'll be surprised about.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion, we approve this one, so we can find out what the next one is.
So this year, we, we gained twenty-two thousand four hundred and seven dollars back um, to the county that we previously didn't have and that was for the standard original Medicaid, uh, claims throughout our county that we were awarded.
So Commissioner Peacock's motion was to approve the renewed contract with the Public Consulting Group.
By utilizing the Palm Beach County.
Right, based on the, uh, back, the, uh, the Palm Beach County contract.
Yes.
Pity backing, okay. Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously, item number thirteen then.
Yes, excuse me, twelve.
Twelve.
So item twelve, this is a board approval of a letter of agreement for the public emergency medical transportation uh, program, uh, between the State of Florida Agency for Healthcare Administration, also known as A C A. So as we move from the first year, we move into our second year of the P M T program, we're now eligible for what's called the Medicaid Managed Plan side of the house on this program. So as you know, or as you all, to inform you, Medicaid in Florida has outsourced. So as you know, or as you all, to inform you, Medicaid in Florida has outsourced a lot of their plans to companies like Ambetter, Staywell, Magellan. Um, several different companies based on the income of the household, the patient themselves, et cetera. Um, so what the consulting group says is the Board of County Commissioners, by entering into this agreement, we will place three hundred forty-five thousand eight hundred seventy-four dollars and ninety-nine cent up to ACHA. In the spring. Jackson County, based on our managed care patients, we will receive eight hundred seven thousand five hundred fifty-three dollars and nine cent. Which will leave the county a net positive return funds at the end of the fiscal year, four hundred sixty-one thousand six hundred seventy-eight dollars and ten cent. So the money that we put forth to the state, to ACHA, acts as a match per se, if you will. That they draw down the federal funds for this program. So all the municipalities, the counties and the cities that have EMS services in Florida that participate. As they all put in their part of the money to the pot to the state, the more money they can draw down from the federal government for this program. Once that's drawn down, those insurance companies turn around and pay us, you all, the BOCC. Of what money is owed based on what we charge for Medicaid. And how much that we actually should receive, they make that difference up. And this year, we will have a net positive four hundred sixty-one thousand six seventy-eight. In that list, also up, uploaded, uh, in your packet, the attachment that shows all the other participating counties and municipalities across the state of Florida. Um, I believe if it did, they get in there, it should be in a spreadsheet in this.
So is this net positive included in this year's budget? Next year.
The three forty-five. Amount of funds, uh, requested.
The three forty-five was not included and I talked to Sarah, she reviewed.
Where are you gonna get that?
It will all be done in next year's budget. So you will make the payment and then you will receive the funds as well.
Next year's, next year's budget.
Correct, in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. So it will be wrapped up in supplemental.
Thank you. Okay, well, that's good news.
Great news. Yes. A lot of money back that we didn't expect to get back. That was otherwise owed to the county that we wouldn't have got, so.
We can use a portion of that for the, uh, match on the new tanker truck.
Sure. We can use some, a lot of things.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve this request.
So you're approving the letter of agreement between the State of Florida and the Agency for Healthcare Administration and the Jackson County, Bay County Commissioners?
Yep, second.
Got some motion from Commissioner Peacock, a second from Commissioner McKinney. Any questions? Yes, sir. Mr. Branch.
Explain to me again.
Yes, sir.
I'm kinda slipped.
No, no.
About the three forty-five.
Yes, sir.
Where is that coming?
Sir, so we would budget three forty-five to put forth. To show that we're putting forth the dollars.
This year or next year?
Next year.
Okay. Okay.
So it, the, the budget that y'all are approving as of October one, but it will be done during supplemental budget, which happens, what, at the beginning of November? So y'all have another opportunity to say, this is where we'll get that money from basically. But you'll also show where you will be getting extra money back in the same budget.
We'll be spending three forty-five, but we're receiving eight oh seven.
Eight oh seven, exactly.
For a net gain of
Four, six, and one.
Four, six, and one, six, seventy-eight.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And this is money, so we only get a hundred thirty-six dollars, a hundred and ninety dollars based on the condition of the patient for Medicaid transport. And, you know, an average cost per transport, um, derived out of the consultants is six hundred ninety-nine dollars. And so based on that price versus what we have, times all of the patients that we haul in a given year. This is the number, this is the price that, that they derived. So. And that's the whole, the whole point of the program is returning money to the BOCs, to the municipalities and counties that provide ambulance services and that otherwise would write off the debt. So.
Okay. Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner McKinney. Any other questions? Comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please symbolize by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Well, Chief Runner, again, appreciate your work.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Good news.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving down to item number thirteen. This is board approval of the public service process, uh, project, Miss Daniels.
Uh, the county town manager contacted Commissioner Branch regarding the various milling projects county was doing, and he advised that the town needs the milling, but does not have trucks to haul it. Um, so the request is that the town would pay for the milling, just requesting assistance with the hauling, uh, asking for a public service project.
Okay. And it's just basically to haul the material.
They don't have anything to haul with.
And they're buying the milling.
They're buying the milling.
Yeah, okay. I'm throwing that out.
You want, I'll second.
I'm making a motion.
Got a motion from Commissioner Branch, second from your Mr. Peacock. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. That motion also carries unanimously. Item number fourteen is board approval of the tornado debris removal grant agreement, Miss Daniels.
It's a agreement that the FDM will allow the county to be reimbursed up to one million three hundred and thirty-three thousand one hundred sixty dollars and thirty-five cents that was expended for debris removal related to the January twenty-twenty-four tornado.
And, uh, this includes all of our costs. This includes what we paid DRC, what we paid the monitoring crew, and then also, uh, I think we talked about this, uh, includes the, uh, labor. Uh, road debris, all of our in-house labor as well. So that's also a bit of good news.
So move, Miss Chair.
Got a motion from Commissioner McKinney, a second from Commissioner Peacock. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. I think it might be a good idea to, uh, send, uh, our legislative delegation a, uh, letter of thanks, uh, thanking them for their support. I, I assume that, uh, I know that we contacted them and asked them to, uh, help us with this request and I think it would be in order to, to send them a letter of appreciation.
Absolutely.
Okay. Uh, item number fifteen, board approval of the Florida Job Growth Grant for the Pusser Road.
This is, uh, Jackson County's been awarded four million six hundred and eighty thousand fifty-nine dollars to pay approximately one point two nine miles of Pusser Road. And install related infrastructure. Uh, the two-lane roadway will begin at State Road two seventy-six and end at Old Air Base Road, and this is just, uh, the agreement authorizing the chairman to sign.
So move.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch. Any questions? Comments? All the fact of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Um, real quick, Willam, where is our developer in their due diligence on the, uh, on the property on Pusser Road? Where are we with that?
Well, the annexation process just completed last week. Um, and then they are really close to having a preliminary site plan completed. Um, but I think once that is settled on, then they'll be ready to go into the, so they have to go through a planned unit development process. Um, which is a subdivision, but it's a little more in-depth because of the amount of lots. But they'll do all that through the city of Marianna. Uh, but they're, they're moving along. Uh, Sarah checked in with them last week and I actually talk to the engineers of record about every other week. Uh, it's a company named OWN out of Destin, so.
What's the name of the company?
OWN, O-W-N.
Okay. All right, very good. Okay, item, uh, number sixteen, which is board approval of the HMGP match agreement for Pusser Road drainage project. This is on the east end of the Pusser Road.
And so this is, uh, the agreement with the Department of Commerce to provide the match portion, two hundred and forty-four thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents to the HMGP Pusser Road Drainage Phase Two Project.
So move.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock.
Second.
Second from Commissioner McKinney. Any questions? I will say in the, uh, I want to make sure of this before we vote on it, but, uh, this project does also include the, uh, the drainage improvements in Jeffrey, south of Pusser Road. All the way to seventy-three and includes drainage underneath seventy-three so that all of that, uh, stormwater from that pond north of Pusser Road will eventually, uh, get to the Shippensburg River. I mean, that includes all of that as well. Okay. All right, got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner McKinney. Any other questions? Comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Item number seventeen. Board approval of the FDACS, or the Department of Agriculture Community Services. Uh, mosquito control contract.
Yes, so the board enters into a yearly contract, uh, for mosquito control program. This agreement will be in October one and in Sept- October one, twenty twenty-four, and end September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. For a total amount of sixty-five thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars and twelve cents.
So move, Miss Chair.
Got a motion from Commissioner McKinney, second from Commissioner Peacock. Any questions? Comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item number eighteen, moving down the agenda is board approval of a, of the TDC Strategic Plan Agreement with Kim Lee Horn. Uh, this, if you, I'll remind everyone that, uh, this commission sat in on this presentations and this was the highest ranking firm.
Yes, so this is a, uh, the ranked, the highest ranked firm was Kim Lee Horn. The cost was negotiated at fifty thousand and the agreement has been approved by the county attorney.
I make a motion, we approve this request.
My second.
There's a motion from Commissioner Peacock and a second from Commissioner McKinney. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the agreement, please sit in the favor raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Item number nineteen is board approval for renewal of the agreement twenty-one, twenty-two, nineteen. This is lobbying services with Shoemaker Advisors, Miss Daniels.
This is the last remaining renewal year for this agreement. Costs is sixty thousand dollars per year for services.
So move, Miss Chair.
Got a motion from Commissioner McKinney, second from Commissioner Peacock. Any questions? Comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, uh, please symbolize by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Item number twenty, this is board approval of the renewal agreement twenty-two, twenty-three dash twenty. This is special magistrate services, Miss Daniels.
This contract allows for two one-year renewals. This will be the first renewal in the amount of twelve thousand dollars.
So a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch. Any questions? Comments? All those in favor of the motion is stated, please symbolize by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Item number twenty-one. Yes, item number twenty-one, this is board rejection of the bids for the Great Oak Concession Air, RFP.
Yes, uh, so just based on, although like I said before, we really appreciate the response. Uh, we decided we're not quite ready for that, and so we'd ask the board to reject these bids to be re visited in the future.
For the recommendation, got a motion from Commissioner Branch, second from Commissioner McKinney. Any questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Peacock.
Yeah, um.
You got three minutes.
Hi, if it takes you that long, say my name. So the funds that we're going to use on this, uh, work will be TDC funds.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. All those in favor of the motion is stated, please symbolize by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item number twenty-two is board approval to request bids for the renovation of the Great Oaks.
The board previously asked to see, uh, a list, and this is probably not completely comprehensive, but it's a good overview of what, um, a team of staff went out and just took a look at, just pretty well cosmetic. Uh, the roof is good. It was replaced in the last few years since the hurricane. Um, so I mean, there may be things run into in the process of this, but, you know, just looking at it from a cosmetic standpoint. Uh, this is what we've come up with that we would like, uh, the board permission to go out to bid for the renovation. We have identified some things that we can do in-house, and they've already started some of that, fixing some steps. Uh, some other, and we're gonna keep trying to do as much in-house as we can. But like to go for as comprehensive as we can with a bid, and then we can pull things out if we need to.
I guess my only, uh, comment would be that, uh, you know, although this is a pretty comprehensive list. I think in order to get bids, it will have to have some more specificity to it as far as, you know, what specifically.
The actual bid documents will. This is just an overview of the kind of things that will be in the bid doc.
And this is where we'll use TDC funds. Okay.
And that would come back to you all to award anything depending on what kind of response we get.
Make a motion to approve this request.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch. Any other questions? Or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of that motion, please symbolize by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item number twenty-three is board approval of change order number seven. This is for the Endeavor Conference, uh, Endeavor Convention Center, Miss Daniels.
This is a deductive change order in the amount of seventy-one thousand seventy-six dollars and twenty-two cents due to direct purchases and PAC savings.
So move.
A motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner, uh, McKinney. Any questions? Comments? All those in favor of motion, uh, as stated, please symbolize by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries three. To one with me accusing myself due to a conflict of office. Three to zero then, actually. Um, item number twenty-four, also board approval of change order number eight, which is for the Endeavor Convention Center as well, Miss Daniels.
Yes, this is, uh, to extend the podium and install carpet tile, install acoustical panels as originally designed. Uh, interior build out for offices, conference room and reception areas as originally designed. Eliminate stained panels and wood verticals and this, at the stage and replace with painted drywall. The total change order amount is one hundred and eleven thousand forty-one dollars and three cents. And this will also increase the contract time by thirty days.
And other than extending the stage, which came about, Kelsey, as a result of conversations, uh, that with, uh, dance clubs, uh, I guess is a good way of saying it. Uh, basically indicated that there would be a big use or a big need for those type of, uh, uh, events. And once they looked at the stage, they determined that it needed to be a little bit larger. So we're extending it to the west, uh, six feet. And then the only other change that was not originally designed and in originally in the bid documents was, um, the, uh, we're concerned about acoustics in there. And I know that there's been talk about, yeah, this being kind of a dual-purpose type facility, but really will not be. It's gonna be a, a convention center only. And with all of the hardened materials in there, uh, ceiling, uh, walls, even with the acoustical panels with that gymnasium wood floor in there, acoustics is gonna be very bad. So, uh, carpeting, uh, putting carpet tile will help out tremendously with the acoustics. So all the other items were originally, uh, intended to be done.
I'm moved. We approve this change order.
Okay. Got a motion from Commissioner McKinney, a second from Commissioner Branch. Any other questions? Comments?
I'm not in favor of the stage.
Heard that before. So, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign based on the stage.
Yeah.
Primarily.
Yeah.
Okay. Lucky record showed that, uh, Commissioner Peacock was voting no because of the stage, permanency of the stage.
Well, you have to recuse yourself. And so, um, we're gonna need to renegotiate that. You can just put on the record, you know, at the stage and still vote for it.
Well, let's just take that part off the stage.
Well, the, the stage.
I'm a hard negotiator.
Yeah, I, I forgot. I'm glad you reminded me. I need to recuse myself due to a conflict of interest. The, the stage is already permanent. I mean, it's being built permanent. This is just.
Yeah, you're making it harder, taking up more of the space.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, have you been out there?
It's been a while since.
Need to go out there and look.
Redo that and I'll take you out there.
Well, I know where it's at. I don't need to.
You really need to look at it. There's a lot of.
You're gonna love it.
What else can you give me?
We'll talk about it.
Two free things.
All right, I'll vote for it.
So all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. That motion carries three to zero with myself, uh, recusing myself. Thank you. Okay, item, uh, number twenty-five. A board approval to set a public hearing for the school board one-half cent sales tax. Miss Daniels.
Yes, we need to set this for September twenty-fourth at six o'clock PM. Uh, the software did not like the language, and so we had to revamp that. Um, so we're gonna try again.
Okay, I see Mr. Franklin in the audience. Chris, anything you need to, or did he leave?
No, he's back.
Just move sides.
I can't speak on it. Um, they didn't like, it's too long, go on the ballot.
Yeah, so they had to rewrite it to fit on the ballot, basically, is all they got.
We're just doing a, answer a question of, right of election.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Chip, motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch. Any other questions? Comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of that motion, please symbolize by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. That takes us down to the other matters, uh, of the public. We've got two items. Request board approval to waive AgCenter rental fees for the Panhandle Youth Expo, Miss Daniels.
I believe that there is someone here. I don't know if Chris is presenting Carolina here.
Good evening. If you might, don't mind, state your name, please, for the record.
I'm Caroline Chappell, and I'm the chairman of the Panhandle Youth Act.
I'm Caroline Chappell, and I'm the chairman of the Panhandle Youth Expo.
Okay.
So, um, there are actually two different, I'm also, um, the supervisor for the Jackson County Junior Cattlemen's Association, um, those entities work very closely together. Uh, but both of these requests are for two events, um, one's on September twenty first, and that's a showmanship clinic, um, for our beef cattle exhibitors. Um, so there will be, I talked with Chris already, um, Stuart, that manages the Ag Center, there won't be any additional setup, we just need to use the large barn on the hill, um, for the youth to, you know, come in and have that, uh, workshop, and then the Panhandle Youth Expo is a multi-species livestock show, we also have youth exhibits, um, that replaced the Jackson County Fair um, when that ceased to exist, and so this, uh, opportunity is open to youth from Florida, Georgia, and Alabama, so um, there's three real kind of goals of the Panhandle Youth Expo, and that's first, to honor the agricultural heritage that we have here in the county. I know you guys know that our farmers and our ranchers are the backbone of our community, we also, um, want to have the opportunity for workforce and career development for our youth, so these youth are raising, you know, livestock and, uh, having the opportunity to be recognized for their hard work. Uh, we work very closely with Mr. Franklin, um, our career and technical education director, um, to make sure that this happens. And then lastly, um, we've opened this up to youth from Florida, Alabama, and Georgia, so that we can have some tourism development in the county, we have, um, several folks, you know, who come from out of state, several counties over, they're renting hotel rooms and obviously purchasing gas, um, to haul these, these, uh, animals in, so we would really appreciate it, um, if you guys could help us with this fee waiver.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve both of her requests, and I would like to thank you for what you do. Right. Very much needed in this county.
And Mr. Chairman, I did, uh, this, uh, Caroline, I don't see, did you have a request for ambulance, don't stand by?
I don't, we traditionally haven't had that, um.
Just something to think about.
Yeah, yeah, we'll definitely do that.
And we, we waive those fees, uh, uh, as well for, uh, similar events and organizations. So if it's something that you need, I would get with the chief runner and just say, you know, it's something that would range.
Accept that motion, yeah.
Yeah, okay, you've got a motion, uh, in.
Both for request.
To waive fees for both events, and you seconded that motion.
Yes.
Okay, uh, any questions, comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify the raise in the right hand, all opposed, same sign, thank you, and again, thank you for putting this on, yeah. Okay, item number two is, uh, approval to waive Ag Center rental fees for the showmanship.
We just did.
Is that, was that the second one? Okay, got it, okay, thank you. All right, very good, that concludes, I think, all of our agenda items, is anyone in the audience wishing to speak for anything that was not on the agenda? I was chastised pretty summarily the last time, so if anyone wants to speak, we have to keep it to three minutes or less. So anyone in the audience wishing to speak on anything that's not on the agenda? Seeing no hands, we'll move to, uh, council, anything that needs to bring to our attention, okay, Ms. Daniels, anything else?
I don't have anything, but Rhett has one request.
Okay, Mr. Daniels.
So I'd like to request the board to set a public hearing for our September twenty fourth meeting for adding the Ag Center to our capital improvements element. We are seeking a grant, uh, through F D P, the Ford recreational, uh, development programs, and, um, we'd like to continue our investment in the Ag Center, so we'd like to, uh, replace some of the stalls that we've been having issues with, um, the upper arena sound system, well, the whole facility sound system, but, uh, specifically the upper arena for radios and other shows, there are some other improvements on the grounds we'd like to request as well, so we get extra points if it's added to our capital improvements element, which has to be done through a public hearing, um, and then that grant will go in at the end of this month.
So the request is to have, to hold a public hearing on September twenty fourth?
To add the Ag Center to our capital improvements element.
Okay, so we've got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch.
We already have a public hearing that day in the town.
We do, but.
This is specific, this has to be specific to add that to the.
Correct.
All right, okay, so motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner, uh, Branch, any other questions, comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously, that all, Ms. Daniels, Commissioner Peacock?
Yes, you brought up something about three minutes, and after that happened, I went home and pulled up the, uh, coordinates we have here. I disagree with, uh, what Michelle had to say about the, uh, problem with, uh.
Limiting.
Limiting people and everything. In looking at this, uh, under, uh, it says procedure for public hearings, item number five says public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. A speaker may only speak once during this specific public comment period for that agenda item. I think we need to add under there, and this is for the board, unless a commissioner has questions, even at a public hearing, you know, somebody may come up and we may have a question, and we may want to engage a board in three minutes. I think we need to add that to this, and then, but when you go back to public participation, it says allotted time, each member of the public shall be granted three minutes total to speak unless requested by a commissioner. The gentleman was talking, and I had questions, and you had questions, and I think you had some question, so the three minute rule is if we have a dozen people line up, want to say, I'm in favor of this, or I'm opposed to this, eh, you know, after you give the first one or two, rest of them's going to be saying the same thing. So yes, it's three minutes unless we have questions, and we can expand that timeframe.
So in other words, what you're saying is if a speaker comes to the podium speaking about a, uh, an item under other matters of the public, and, and he starts, he or she starts speaking, then, you know, limit that to three minutes.
Give them three minutes, but I may have a question, or you may have a question, they may, but they may be up there twenty minutes.
As long as it's extended by.
By commissioners.
Questions, uh, questions, I'm, I'm.
And that's, I think we should also be over there under, uh, the public hearing. Because, you know, people come up sometimes and they're discussing things, and we may have questions. Well, if you go by this, three minutes is all you get, but we may need them up there for twenty minutes, thirty minutes, it's our time.
I, I'm comfortable with that clarification, you know, because I.
I'll get with Ms. Willam and see if we can.
I have a problem with people that's want to talk twenty, thirty, forty five minutes about stuff we, we have nothing to do with.
Well, there's no problem, they, they follow under that three minute rule. But if you don't ask them, one of us doesn't ask questions in three minutes, they're off, they're finished.
If somebody comes up here and speaks for three minutes, and we cut them off at three minutes, and, and as a commission, we felt that that didn't just, didn't.
Right, we interject the dialogue with them.
Then that's it.
Exactly, that's it, they're finished, but if I, you got questions, any of us could have questions.
That could generate additional discussion and additional questions, yeah, I, I, I'm good with that.
Why couldn't we just put them on the next agenda?
Well, sometimes it's inconvenient for people to come up here. If they're standing here talking.
Problem with people has legitimate stuff, we need to talk to them.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Just people that talk about stuff we have nothing to do with.
Yeah, well, I mean, we've had that.
Well, you.
I think that's where we would, we would need to be, uh, uh, cognizant of that and not, not ask any questions, and you paid your three minutes, and, you know, if you want to come speak.
Commissioner doesn't ask you any questions, that's it. That's the way I see it, but I'll get with Ms. Daniels.
Yeah, okay, is that it?
Yeah, I guess I'll let it all go.
Yeah, Commissioner Branch.
I have a question for Mr. Ken, I don't know if I can go back to that or not.
Yes, you can.
You know, if, if this other, uh, sinkhole is looked at, and it's another seacoal, and that's, I mean, if that's taken care of, is, are you going to be all right with that then? With the subdivision?
I'm going to be fine with what the commission would agree on, understated my opinion of, of what I feel for the county would be better, but as far as this land, this is this man's land, he bought it. That, that's, and as long as the commission and the workers, people have taken care of their part, it's not for me to say whether that man can build or can't fit, that's his land.
Okay, well, and, and another point is that, you know, we've got a comprehensive plan, and, uh, if it's in compliance with that, then we've got to be careful about, you know, going against it, so.
That's exactly right, and if we've got problems with a comprehensive plan, that's another issue.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner McKinney, the only thing I've got is, uh, uh, Rhett and Jeffrey, I guess, uh, Partners, I've been, uh, notified by Partners for Pets that they're having a yard sale Saturday, this next Saturday, and can we get that road, uh, uh, that leads up to Partners for Pets cut, uh, before then, do we, do we actually maintain that?
We have, no, we shouldn't or couldn't, but we.
Is that something that we could do as a public project, just a.
Public service.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the, uh,
Rascal.
Work on the Partners for Pets driveway.
Yeah.
As a public service project.
I've got a motion, Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch, any other.
On the proviso, we use your money.
It'll be out there, existing facility.
One, one out there, yeah, okay, got a motion, a second, any other questions, comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify the raise in the right hand, all opposed, same sign. Okay, that takes care of the agenda items, and all the commissioners will adjourn this morning to the Jackson County Board of County.